I stand to the merits of your powerful conduct.
Evening, everyone, and thank you very much. I ask our General Manager to open tonight's meeting with the council prayer, please.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vouchsafe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen.
Before proceeding, I'd like to remind everyone that tonight's meeting is being recorded electronically and will be available on the website later this week. And also, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, and pay our respects to elders past and present. Thank you. Open and acknowledge some apology for Alderman Kewes, who has accidentally... Item two, council may have minutes of 16th April, or circulate if you take this ready to inform. Thank you, Alderman John. All those in favor? Item three, item four, council may have the workshops on the 23rd and 30th April in the agenda for tonight. Thanks, Alderman John. File declarations of interest of all of you, or post a statement. Alderman John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to declare a conflict in 11.3.2 and 11.7.2.
Questions? Item six, tabbing petitions, there's none in the agenda. Alderman John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to table a petition that's been signed by 1,027 persons. And the petition reads, "We, the undersigned, require the Clarence City Council to hold a public meeting about the proposed development of Hunter Developments on Rosney Hill. This is a requirement of the council under the Local Government Act of 1993, Sections 57 and 59. Our concerns include the privatizing of a public reserve, a history of inadequate community consultation, destruction of native vegetation, and local traffic implications." There's electronic versions, well as a signed copy. I hereby table the petition.
Any other petitions? Item seven is public question time, there are no matters on notice. Are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Yes, General Manager, you've invited this on on notice. Identify yourself and say where you're from, and then post a question, please.
I'm watching a Zuda Malana Road. This is fun. I sent a junior cochrane kangaroo bay on Saturday. It was a full of chaos with cars, parking, and children crossing a road. You're probably lucky, Joe and Victor Marshall were there videotaping. Given construction hasn't even started yet in the area, and the anticipated increase in traffic is yet to come, and given the strategy on the council's website about parking in the area, do you believe that this chaos is acceptable?
Take that on notice. Thank you very much.
Well, I guess I'm mostly concerned because Alderman's early setting to remember, do you not think that as a result of this development in Kangaroo Bay, that there will be improvements in the future for parking and to traffic in the area?
Excuse me, it's just, sorry, are you asking a second question?
I'm just supposed to be a poll on, you know, I'm just really concerned.
Look, we can only take questions during this session. If you've got further information, file may express anything to us. Thank you.
Given further consideration to my suggestion, council meetings be streamed live on the internet, and is any action being taken to rectify the faulty equipment?
Thank you very much. Mr. Ginn?
Item Ginn, item Ginn 53, Kangaroo, Adelaide.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it was very unfortunate that we had, due to a technical problem, the last council meeting didn't record. Certainly was showing as recording during the meeting, but at the end of the meeting, the file was corrupted and could not be read. We have, we believe, corrected that technical glitch, but we're also in the process of investigating further and better options for the recording of council meetings. In relation to the other matter, Mr. Mayor, about the live streaming, that's a matter for council that would, I'd have to get some direction from council in regard to...
In regards to the community grants being discussed tonight, sunshine didn't go, filmed by being omitted, and ask Alderman...
That's a matter on the agenda tonight, and as such, is not really appropriate, given that it's got to be dealt with later.
Could I ask another question? Just a very special question.
Go ahead.
If a Alderman was a patron of a grand recipient in tonight's community, grant approval, would they make themselves absent from the decision?
Hope for the council are concerned. Thanks.
The question that was raised tonight about the IT equipment is, I've raised it on about 12 occasions, about the microphones, the video, and asking again, can we have a timeline, Mr. General Manager? Seeing we've got very expensive equipment here, bodes and the like, we find it very difficult to back the issue. And if we've got video that isn't available to the community, can we have a timeline when this is going to be remedied, because it's been going on since the system was put in?
Thanks, Mr. Ginn.
But I have many to look at.
General Manager? Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're seeking technical advice. As soon as I get that technical advice, we'll be looking to act upon it, but I can't give you a timeline at the moment.
The department block expected on to Cambridge Road. I refer here to the plan. I have defended the agenda.
Look, I am sorry to interrupt again and be difficult, but because it's on tonight's agenda, and we have to accord this procedural fair process, under the rules, I'm not permitted to allow the questions without notice on this particular matter, because it's on the agenda tonight. Look, I'm sorry. Thank you. Are there any other questions which I can't answer from members of the public? Thank you. Item eight is deputations by members of the public. General Manager?
Mr. Mayor, we have one deputation this evening, Mr. Steve Battin of Tranmere, who wishes to address council in relation to development application at 155 Tranmere Road.
I do need to point out that there's only three minutes available, and there'll be an alert 30 seconds to go.
Hello, everyone. I'm Steve Battin. I live at 157 Tranmere Road, directly south and adjacent to the proposed development. I'm here not after a rejection of the development application, but I am requesting approval be conditional on a minor cosmetic change, namely minimizing width of the eaves on the southern side of the second story. This reduces shading and brings the development more in line with the planning scheme. So first, I'll run through it, just plain English reasons, and then I'll outline why such a modification is justified under the planning scheme. The development itself is 7.1 metres high, with the wall of the second story 3.35 metres from my northern property, Banbury. In addition to a privacy screen on a deck, the building structure itself extends 0.7 metres outside the painting envelope. While the original proposal had no eaves, the new proposal has added eaves ranging from 0.6 to 1 metres wide. The addition of 0.6 metre eaves on the southern side takes the protrusion outside the painting envelope to approximately 1.3 metres. They serve no functional purpose. They do increase the already significant shading of my property. The development will cause significant shading in my block over winter and into spring and autumn. This particularly applies to my garden area, where I have mature fruit trees and a paved outdoor dining area used for morning coffees when sunny. Unfortunately, I can't actually pick these up and move them. The development also shades my home office in winter. In short, the development has a massive shading impact on my property, exacerbated by the resubmission adding 0.6 metre eaves. Minimizing the eaves on the southern side will reduce this impact. Other houses have been able to have minimized eaves on the southern side presumably for this exact reason. In terms of the planning scheme, the development does not meet the acceptable solution criteria of the planning scheme for setback under clause 10.4.2. It extends 0.7 metres outside the envelope. It then needs to be evaluated under the performance criteria and must not cause unreasonable loss of amenity by reduction in sunlight. The development does cause an unreasonable loss of amenity, exacerbates this by adding the maximum width eaves, which further increases the shading. The planning scheme allows eaves to protrude 0.6 metres outside the envelope. In this case, the building itself already protrudes 0.7 metres beyond the envelope. Minimizing the eaves would result in a shading impact on my property, only marginally greater than what is considered an acceptable solution under the planning scheme. It is unreasonable not to do this, given it is a cosmetic change. So in summary, the development will have a large impact on my amenity. Minimizing the eaves on the southern side is a very minor change that improves solar access to my property and brings the proposed development more in line with an acceptable solution under the planning scheme. That's it.
Thanks very much, Mr. Battin. Just taking back to a question from Ms. Yasuda in regard to the Kangaroo Bay traffic. You have raised a safety issue for small children in the area, and we will ensure that the Rangers are there next weekend, when the soccer's on, to assess the situation and see what we can do about it. Thank you. Moving on to item nine, motions on notice, there are none. Moving on to reports from outside bodies. Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, there's nothing to report. Copying refuse disposal site joint authority, Alderman Campbell. In regard to Tas Water, it was circulated to Alderman, but I'd like to table a copy of the memorandum of understanding that was signed between Tas Water, the chief owners' rep, Mayor Downey, and the state government in terms of how both parties might move forward in terms of the Tasmanian government becoming a part owner. The process from here involves, first of all, local government considering a change to the constitution of the company, and then, secondly, the Tasmanian government submitting and getting approval from the Tasmanian Parliament for the changes as well. So I'll table that, and also advise that there's a general meeting of the owners next week on the 10th of May, which I will be attending as your representative.
A question to you has been mentioned in the memorandum of understanding. The government will have a say on the appointment of the directors or to the... Do they have just the one vote, or do they have this one as part of the composition of the board, or is it because they are buying in and basically having, contributing a 200 million over it, five years or whatever it is, does that give them a number of votes that could in fact deliver membership of the board to their liking? Perhaps you could explain to me?
Certainly, the MOU envisages that the current board selection committee comprising nine, eight owners' representatives and the chairman, if the chairman's appointment's not under consideration, be added to by one representative from the state government, so that they would have a very small, but a vote and a consideration in the appointment of the board for Tas Water. Any other questions on that? Thank you. Moving on to 10.2, reports from council and special committees. The first one's the Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee, that the chairperson's report be received by council. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That has been circulated in the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second, please? Thank you, Alderman John.
And I would like to advise members that the Ralphs Bay Coastal Track quotes have been received. An application for a permit to council cabaret and bedding has been submitted.
Questions on the Tracks and Trails committee report? That be received. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Next one is the National Natural Resource Management Quarterly Report. Alderman Farlan?
Report, Mr. Mayor.
Second up, thanks, Alderman Kewes. Any questions on that report? Put the motion that be received. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Third one is the Bicycle Steering Committee Quarterly Report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second up, Alderman Walker. Thank you. Any questions on that report? Put the motion that be received. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Are there any other reports? Alderman James?
Item 6, Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee, minutes of the 26th of April 2018. I would like to draw council's attention to new tracks that have been proposed, the Meion Skyline Link, the Clarence Kayak Trail, and also to the reference to the Tangara Trail on Ross Common Track. This has been a discussion in relation to field archery because of where they need to, obviously, there has to be some further discussion on their relocation. So I'd like to table those minutes by council's consideration.
Any other reports? Alderman Chong?
Thank you. Minutes of the Richmond Advisory Committee on the 20th of March.
Moving on to reports for officers, 11.1, that the information, the weekly briefing reports of the 16th, 23rd, and 30th April be noted. Alderman Campbell, second, Alderman Kewes. Any questions, Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 16th of April 2018, two items on this. Firstly, and basically on behalf of my colleague Alderman Piers, in relation to the Bayfield Street Streetscape Works Progress Report, my question through you to Mr. Graham, in his capacity as the manager of that department. Mr. Graham, there has been a number of emails, and I know that you have received them in relation to the timeframe in relation to this. And I do know that in the quarterly report, it's now at the end of May that works will be completed. How is it this timeframe has changed? Because it was my understanding that, through you, Mr. Mayor, too, Mr. Graham, it was my understanding that the works would be completed in April. What's the problem? How come it's now a month out and perhaps longer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There have been a number of issues with services, including power, in terms of waiting on the Tad networks to relocate power and having subcontractors arrive on site. So we're starting shortly on the intersection works, which has got four weeks or start now on four weeks. We're waiting to hear from the ash filter. There's a lot of work to do to actually non-fill the road.
Question still on the weekly briefing report of the 16th of April 2018. The Bill of Oval Transport Plan, Resident Representation Resignation. I would like to say that there has been exceptional work done on behalf of Vic and Joanne Marsh in relation to the relocation of the taxi route through there. And it's really, I would like to make the comment is congratulations to them for they've done an excellent job. So my question through you, Mr. Mayor, to, I think it's Mr. Graham, in his capacity as the manager of that department. Mr. Graham, there have been approximately six applicants for the position of resident representative on the lot. I'm pretty sure that's what I understood to be the case. Here it is on page. It says a total of six people have nominated. Were invited to attend a facilitated meeting which developed a process for the group to nominate their representative. So I think it must be six people have come to nominate a representative. When do you think this can position be filled? And obviously, could you endorse the importance of this position as part of the, as that sort of conduit between the community, Cricket Tasmania, and the council?
Any other questions on the weekly briefing reports? Okay, so put the motion that we note the information, all those in favor, carried unanimously. And there's nothing at 11.2 in regard to previous petitions. So I'd like to advise that council now intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approval Act. 11.3.1 is a development application at 4 Colgola Street, Mornington, for two multiple dwellings. Thank you, Alderman Farlan. Second up, Alderman Kewes, thank you. Wish to speak to the motion?
Just per the officer's recommendation?
Thank you. Second up?
Oh, and it says, Mr. Mayor, that we're going to get more of this urban entry in residential areas of Clarence, and it's quite appropriate, I think.
The other speakers. Okay, so I'll put the motion for approval subject to petitions and advice, all those in favor. Carried unanimously. Could we recall Alderman Henn, please? 11.3.2, development application, 155 Tranmere Road, Harrow, for multiple dwellings. And before asking for a move and a second up, the General Manager's got a additional bit of information. Mr. Lovell?
Just through the normal media, with circularizing replacement attachment, ages not like you've got to go through the street there, lose some of the material, then you
Okay, should we have a move and a second up, please?
I support the officer's recommendation and take on board the discussion we had earlier, what we presented earlier. However, with the current building envelopes, we have little room to have discretion, but the discretion that's being applied is of a minor amount to the overall context of what is being provided. I don't feel that the extension and protrusion of the eaves will overshadow to any large degree, unfortunately, the current position that is already a deemed approval in its own right.
Kewes?
I support this application. I think you heard Mr. Battin just a little while ago on this. And it does say that the home office, which is considered habitable room under the screen, shadow diagrams show that would receive in excess of three hours sunlight at winter solstice, 21st of June. And on that basis, the shadow diagrams submitted, the impact is therefore not considered to be reasonable. And I know also, as it's a smaller and more private open space, 157 is located between the garage and the dwelling. Though this is part of the site, is substantially impacted, it's considered that the site has sufficient other private open space. Therefore, this does not unreasonable impact on the residential amenity, noting that the area of land, the total area of land, block of land that this residence is located on is 1,014 square metres.
Excellent. On what to start, Mr. Mayor, by asking a question of Mr. Lovell, and then continuing on. Mr. Lovell, can you indicate to me in the performance criteria, where in fact the performance criteria does address the 0.7 metres beyond the building envelope, and how it counters the acceptable solution in relation to it being within the building envelope? Because I would like to be directed to the page where the performance criteria has addressed that in relation to the building envelope.
I'm going to go to page 15, which is page 1. It's using the building boards. And if I can, I'll sign on. The critical issue is whether or not there's overshadow of the study window. And the shadow diagrams show extended sunlight, it shows this three hours to that window. The other discussion in the performance criteria is that the amount of open spaces overshadowed. It reiterates that the area between a study and a building construction is substantially overshadowed. Because, because it doesn't say because there's another area of open space which can cause a difference in the scheme, that maybe there's a bit of stress to it.
Finally, just on that study, that habitable room. So what you're saying, Mr. Lovell, is that if in the one instance, the overshadowing occurs in relation to the habitable room, then that's not enough to actually refuse the application, go to private open space as a factor which can basically negate the overshadowing on a habitable room? Is that, so we can go from one to the other to do an assessment in relation to that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're two minutes. One relates to the overshadowing of the window. The diagram shows that there's three hours. three hours. The other issue, the building, the overshadowing of the private open spaces. There are two areas of private open spaces. One is substantially overshadowed, and had that been the only area of open space, there would have been grounds for use. Or whether there's a substantial area of open space in the design of the property, which makes the test.
Wish to continue, Alderman Hume?
Well, I will continue. I listened very carefully to the speaker's comments, Mister Mayor, and thought that, you know, really, the acceptable solution specified, you know, point six, and this is point seven outside the building envelope. But then it's coming into this whole area of winter solstice to whether or not there's three hours at all, you know, a block of three hours which in fact will give sunlight. And so, look, it, you know, if any sort of issue comes up like this in the future, and if it's reliant upon three hours of solstice, then really, you know, most of these applications will go through anyway, in my opinion, because it's, you know, it's only three hours with any timeframe, basically, and that is very easily met with buildings which cast shadows. So it's disappointing that we are left with this sort of performance criterion to be able to make an assessment. And when there is a habitable room which is being overshadowed and has been acknowledged that that's the case, then in fact, there is another criterion that allows the actual private open space, or two areas of private open space, to become into contention. So again, this whole system of performance criteria is open to interpretation, and it's a sad thing that we can move from one criterion to another in order to make an assessment.
Mister Mayor, while I sympathise with anyone who is impacted by overshadowing on the property. Three hours of solar access, whether it should be to a room or an area of private open space, may not be, during winter solstice, may not be considered fair or adequate. But when it refers to unreasonable overshadowing in our planning scheme, it actually specifically defines that as being able to receive three hours of sunlight. That's something we don't really have a question over. We can't apply our own assessment of what we consider unreasonable. It is defined in the scheme as being allowing three hours of solar access. I guess, however, one of the key questions in the scheme is, you do have an instance here of overshadowing the private open space of a dwelling on an adjoining lot now, there are two, there are two private open spaces. But the first sentence in the performance criteria is, the site of the dwelling must not cause any unreasonable loss of amenity. And I guess one of the questions to ask, and I'll just put this to Mister Lovell, through you, Mister Mayor, if I may, is there, is there any definition that goes to whether it's an unreasonable loss of amenity if you have two areas of private open space available, but one doesn't receive, you know, or what, one is what might be defined as receiving unreasonable overshadowing under that definition, say if the other wasn't available? Is that, is that something that's defined under the scheme, or is that a planning officer's judgment in the report?
Other speakers, on this? Write a reply, Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I think once again, this is indicative of the fact that it would be good to have a review of the three hour sunlight application. This council did approve a motion to forget some years ago, and we didn't get very far with that. However, I think that the new planning scheme allows us, or will allow us over time, to review a lot of these things when we're using the performance criteria as the assessment. And again, as Alderman Holmes just said, it can have a subjectiveness to it, which was the reason why we weren't wanting to use other standards. So time to look at those things, put them on a list, and review them as we need to, and work to an agenda, I feel. It's not good enough to just leave things and wait till something happens. We actually need to look at how the planning scheme affects the community and doesn't just give all the goodies to the developers.
So the motion for the chair is for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Against? Harry? And could we recall Alderman Chong, please? Item 3.11.3.3 is a development application at 7 Percy Street, Richmond, for four modelable dwellings. Alderman Chong, thank you. Second up, Alderman McFarlane. Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I think the officer's recommendation, including the conditions to ensure the landscaping, that following the heritage look by changing the slope of the roof, and the use of materials as given in the Richmond Townscape, mean that this is an excellent recommendation, and I support the officer's recommendation.
Alderman Chong?
I'd just like to say that I think that we have got some other areas in Clarence that could do with these kinds of conditions being set on them, thank you.
Other speakers? Need to write a reply?
No, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. And 11.3.4 is the Clarence Draft Local Provision Schedule for the Tasmanian Planning Scheme. Thank you, Alderman James, and second, Alderman Chong?
Look, I think it's over to the independent arbiter, if I can use those words, because it's up to the TPC. And again, as to whether the LPS criteria is prescribed, and the local provisions are taken on board, and also too, another try, Mister Mayor, at the Belray Bluff criterion. There's been a lot of discussion about that over the years, because we would, I would have liked to have thought that it would be sort of listed with Begley, Battery Point, Belray Bluff is sort of in that category. But we had one go at it, and we're having another try. And I think, hopefully, Mister Alomes and his team might have a rethink in relation to that matter, and perhaps give it the tick in the box. But it's to be seen, and we'll wait and see. So look, it's up to the TPC, hopefully, there's been a lot of work done on it. We haven't always got our way in this, but there is another day, and I see council support.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I think the local provision schedule is a very important part of our planning scheme to give it as the customisation that we want to reflect the character of the various areas that we have in Clarence. Whilst there are a few tidy up things perhaps in the schedule that need fixing, this is the beginning of a long process, and I think it's important that we get it off to the Planning Commission, I'm sure, with that before us in the not-too-distant future.
No, I had, oh, sorry, Alderman Cusick.
Just a question, Mister Mayor. Global provision schedule, I mean, I presume that includes Belray Bluff and Richmond and these sort of areas? Does it include other areas such as, say, Lordedar, where we want more stringent controls over where people can build, run to the sand dunes? Is that, are we asking for that as well?
Just a curious question. Obviously, any area is subject to planning controls, there are several, such as the development mansion, there's that, those that, you expect that, second, not that. It's all part of the local provision, right? Those sorts of things, of course, like the erosion hazard work, those sorts of things. There are some things that address juvenile protection, and those are state work.
Other points on the TPS? LPS, sorry, local provision schedule?
Thank you. Well, I have a few problems with it in the context that I don't agree with the advice you've given. So in that context, in looking at some of those areas that are covered by coastal erosion and hazard, I feel in myself, in my perspective, that the coastal policy has not been interpreted properly, and that within the context of the erosion and hazard zones, we need to have another look at the risks to council in the future if there is not an ability to set conditions and controls. So I will be foreshadowing a motion seeking a report on coastal risks, because I personally am not satisfied that both controls are there.
Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman James? So the motion for the chair is that we endorse the draft local provisions schedule, and forward them to the Tasmanian Planning Commission. All those in favour? Against? And could I, at this stage, general manager, ask you to convey our appreciation to the planning staff, in particular Mister Dan Ford, for a mammoth effort in terms of preparing these local provisions? Thank you. That concludes our business as a planning authority. 11.7.1, Alderman Chong and Hume, have you declared an interest in that?
No, point two.
Point two, sorry. Alderman Hume, was there another one for you? Okay. Oh, it's hearing, Alderman James. Which we need to up the P A system a bit, I think. 11.7.1 is the quarterly report to the 31st of March, that had been received. Alderman Campbell, second, Alderman Chong. Wish to speak to it?
No, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Any questions on the quarterly report? Thank you, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. During my office break today, I decided over a brew to read the quarterly report, and I have a number of questions that I would like to ask and seek advice on. On page eight, the trail bikes working group continued to look at strategies around environment education diversion enforcement. Planning is commenced to operate the school-based moto safe programme. There has been some approachment by trail bike riders onto council's trails. My question through you to the appropriate officer is that, is there anything that will come out of this working group which will enable younger people, and I'm saying mostly younger people, to sort of learn where to ride their bikes, and also to take necessary consideration on other people's property in order to reduce the number of excursions onto public and private land? Will this working group determine a positive outcome in relation to that?
Through you.
Through you, Mister Mayor, I hope so. In respect to the working group, they're currently working with Heinz Topper, and we're about to find out.
On page 34 of the weekly briefing report, under water sampling, it says retests were taken of all sample results within the Recreation Water Quality Guidelines of 2007, and except one retest which fell above the limit of 14 CFUs per 100 millilitres. The beach was not closed on this occasion. It doesn't explain or indicate which beach was closed, presumably it's within the city of Clarence. Would the appropriate officer be able to identify for me the actual beach that has obviously exceeded the, by my interpretation, the Enter Cockapie, if that's how you pronounce it, council level?
Mister Sui?
Through you, Mister Mayor. If you look at the table just above that, it was Tara Beach, Galatia, there was a testing on the 30th of January, and there was another testing on the 1st of February, the following day. The second test was just 26 units above that standard, and advice from the Department of Health was no need to close it.
My final comment is in relation to page, communities and people, there's a list of key performance indicators and outcomes with regard to a number of civic functions and openings conducted, attended, and refers to amongst other things, the launch of Anchorage Retirement Village and so on. My question through you, Mister Mayor, to the appropriate officer, is, has council undertaken, or has any knowledge of, the usage of either directly or indirectly of council's usage by the public of the Clarence Cricket Club at Kangaroo Bay? Through you, Mister Mayor. Directly, no, but I will endeavour to get some statistics from the cricket club of the private hirings that have occurred in respect to the facility.
All right, any other questions on the quarterly reports? In that case, the motion is that quarterly report be received, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. And 11.7.2, thank you, Alderman Chong?
Mister Mayor, with the appreciation of the U public gallery for jogging my memory, I wish to declare an interest in 11.7.2.
Thank you. 11.7.2, community support grants, as detailed in the agenda? Thank you, Alderman Chong. Second, Alderman Cusick. Would you like to speak to the motion?
I think these grants have been allocated very nicely across the whole of Clarence. A number of them are very personable things to help and save the lives of our residents, and the others are about long-term usage and need within the community groups, like computers et cetera. So I'm really pleased that the committee considers a whole range of ideas and they come up with this list, it's excellent.
Alderman Cusick? Any other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Look, I like to draw council's attention to a number of these applications, in particular to the Jillston Bay Tennis Club, and also the Sunshine Tennis Club. And the first of, of course, is in relation to seating and court screening for the Jillston Bay Tennis Club. And the Sunshine Tennis Club application for a defigurator purchase. The former has been, is supported for $1,500 as part of, meets the criteria in relation to council's health and wellbeing plan, and there is a social benefit for the community. That's in relation to the Clarence Bay, Jillston Bay Tennis Club. With respect to the Sunshine Tennis Club, the defibrillator purchase, that has been not supported. And it's been on the basis that, um, there is a defibrillator in the Harrah Community Centre which is available to the tennis club and this may be sufficient during open hours. So if, in the circumstances that the, uh, the sunshine, let's call it, the, sorry, the Harrah Community Centre is closed, then how do we get around or how do we handle a situation of where there is an emergency and a defibrillator is required to sort of resuscitate that person who in fact may be on the brink of, of death? The criteria, not only for the assessment in relation to the tennis club, the Sunshine Tennis Club, but also for the Gilston Bay Tennis Club, is that, and I've said it already, it has to deal with Clarence's health and wellbeing plan. So I would submit that the Clarence, uh, Gilston Bay Tennis Club request for, um, seating, uh, because the seating is very old and rough. In this instance, and it's to be replaced to provide, uh, better, uh, seating arrangements. And, and therefore that meets the criteria of health and wellbeing plan. And then, on the other hand, the, uh, the defibrillator purchase appears that it's, doesn't meet the health and wellbeing of the community and therefore it's been rejected. So my question to, uh, to the assessment committee is, how does seating, whether it's rough or old, complement new seating? And where a defibrillator, which can actually save a life, has been rejected in the case of the Sunshine Tennis Centre? I just find that there is no relationship whatsoever. And I believe that we should, I think, reject the actual application for the Gilston Bay Tennis Club on the basis it's new seating and approve a defibrillator for the Sunshine Tennis Club.
Um, in, in the first instance, I think it's important to look at these community grants separately on their own merits without trying to make trade-offs between one and another. I, I think that that's important, but having said that, uh... Sorry? Yeah, I know, but there are lots of clubs and, uh, anyway. It, it's not as if we allocate so much tennis and so much to rugby or so much to any other particular endeavour. It's, uh, each application should be considered on its own merits. Um, who's chairing that particular assessment?
Panel, in a minute.
Uh, Mr Dewey?
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor. Uh, Major, in respect to the Sunshine Tennis Club, uh, they have access to the Harrah Recreation Centre, the Harrah Community Centre, rather. And it's possible for them, uh, when the centre, before the centre closes, they can go over and get the defibrillator and bring it to the tennis club itself. It's only a short distance, as you would know, so they can have ready access to it. So it's not that they can't get access to it, it just makes better use when you have a limited amount of funds and you get the best value out of the assets that exist.
Dewey.
Um, I too was, was concerned about that particular item. Um, and I understand that, um, the total cost was two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, of which they were requesting a contribution for a grant for fifteen hundred. So they obviously had eleven hundred and fifty they were going to contribute themselves. Um, as pointed out, the, the most beneficial purpose of these defibrillators are for the early, early stages. So when we talk about time passing, there is really no time to pass. So it would have been excellent to see this, um, I tried to sort of point out that the whole assessment is based on a number of factors. And, um, I couldn't really come up with a real good reason because based on health and wellbeing, I thought this would have exceeded the criteria.
One, one thing I can point out is that it's, um, it's within the gift of council to move an amendment and actually include the Sunshine Centre grant if, if the councils are to do that, 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 I'm sure the funds...
Is there sufficient funds to do that?
Yeah.
Or I would like to move that?
I, I take it Alderman James is seconding it? So that, that's an amendment. We, um, uh, probably need to formalise that amendment. Is there any other discussion on that amendment?
If I approve?
Um, well, we can accept it on that basis if the second does as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's no need to proceed to the, um, formal amendment process? So the motion now is as listed with the amendment that, uh, the Sunshine Centre be included. Uh, sorry, the Sunshine Tennis Club. All right, any other speakers? Alderman?
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to clarify so, so we're all clear on what, what we're discussing, that the amendment is, um, simply to include the Sunshine Tennis Club's application, so thereby reducing the ballots available for the next round. When, when actually, um, the amendment's on the basis of Alderman James's suggestion of swapping one, rather propose it for another.
Yeah, quite right, there's no swap, it's just a matter, it, it's really important that we consider each one on its merits.
Yeah.
Any other, right of reply, is there?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
In the context that I was going to suggest it went forward to the next round, but this actually makes it better. So I support the amended motion.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is as discussed, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point seven point three is the Kangaroo Bay Development Precinct Request for Proposals, Stage Two. The recommendation is the preferred developer status be awarded to Hunter Developments for the boulevard site. And we'll just wait for our two aldermen to resume their seats. Alderman Van Verta.
Uh, Mr Mayor, I wish to move an alternative motion, which I had circulated earlier this evening.
Has everyone got a copy of that? It adds an extra clause that council endorses the further extension of time given by the Joint Assessment Panel to Hunter Developments to provide additional information on its proposal. Who have a second for the new motion? Thank you, Alderman Hurley. Uh, Alderman Van Verta.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I think this is self-explanatory. It's an alternative motion that provides clarification. As you noted, there is a new clause A that council endorses the further extension of time given by the Joint Assessment Panel to Hunter Developments, Priory Limited, to provide additional information on its proposal. There's also a, an addition, uh, in the now Part D, which was Part C, Clause D that was Clause C, where it says that as a condition of the preferred developer status, and the additional words are via the development agreement, Hunter Development, Priory Limited, be required to undertake a community consultation programme or progress. I have...
It was only the Wharf that they were awarded, uh, uh, developer status for. And that is, well, a standard two years ago. So how can that information that was provided then and give them time now for catch-up and having awarded them developer status? Because that's what this motion is saying. Under Part, uh, under Part B, it says preferred developer status for the boulevard site be awarded to Hunter. That's part of the recommendation. And that is based on that because council, um, did not award the boulevard, uh, uh, developer status at that time. We are now saying, well, what was offered then? And to, and, and that basically was why we decided to award developer status because on that information that was provided back in two thousand and sixteen, we're saying we're going to award the developer status to them. Okay, there is a nice little clause in here which says that, that, um, a further period for Hunter to provide additional information past the original extension period of April two thousand and seventeen. So, once you award developer status, then it doesn't matter that the, the free market can determine as to whether there is another developer that may come in with a better proposal and which we could consider as part of opening up the expression of interests, um, over again. And I think that is the way to go. I think we need to let the marketplace determine as to whether or not there is another developer out there that can meet the criteria, criteria in relation to the, um, uh, what is being proposed for the boulevard status. I will not support this, Mr Mayor, because it's awarding Hunter in the motion but it's giving them a little bit of extra time, catch-up to provide additional information, uh, past the original, uh, application time. Why don't we say, and, and it was raised on Friday at the workshop, why don't we open it up? Why don't we, you know, decide not to award, uh, developer status to Hunter? And let, and put out expressions of interest to the community? And there are many organisations and companies now, which I believe would consider putting up a proposal because back in two thousand, uh, two thousand and sixteen, the market was very, very lucid, it was very stable. But now it's on a boom and a bust proposal and there are huge developments in relation to investors and would jump at the opportunity to be given an opportunity to put in an expression of interest on the boulevard. I don't think it's the appropriate way of doing it. We didn't award it to them back in two thousand and sixteen. We awarded to the, to the Wharf, uh, in relation to the Wharf. But now is a better opportunity for us to call for expressions of interest and let the market dictate. And there may be a better proposal that may come forward that may be more sensitive to that area than what perhaps what Hunter may come up with. So I will not support this. And if I am successful in convincing my colleagues, I would like this matter deferred until, and perhaps the general manager can seek advice as to whether we can call for expressions of interest. I believe we can and allow the marketplace to dictate on the development of Kangaroo Bay Boulevard.
Alderman Khan.
I do have problems with those statements, Mr Mayor, in the context that when the expression of interest went out, there was only one developer that responded and it wasn't two, it was three. In light of the difficulties and the ongoing, um, changes to the Wharf area to the benefit of the community, I believe that we made the right decision in allowing Hunter to have an extension of time to re-submit their plans. In light of that, I believe that if we were to renege on any kind of agreement that was, um, contained within the original expression of interest, that Hunter Development would have every right to be very annoyed and may even consider some kind of financial recompense. I understand the sentiments that maybe people are not too happy with the outcomes of certain developments in this area, but this is a business consideration. And we have already given support in like to this concept when we gave them the extension of time as well. So for me, I have a problem unless we had, um, a major reason for not doing this. Um, I believe that we would be flying a very red flag.
Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Uh, I will be backing this motion. I do believe, uh, in the circumstances we find ourselves in, this is the most prudent way forward. Uh, it was indeed appropriate to seek counsel from the Proveny Advisor and that advice gives me counsel and, uh, gives me some, uh, support around, um, very important in this decision. I would suggest though, uh, given the context of this debate, it might actually be time for, uh, a certain real estate agent to pull its, uh, sign down. Advertising site, so, uh, yeah, I would seek further council support.
Alderman Cusick.
I mean, eighteen months ago, and that might be close to two years for Alderman James, it is eighteen months, council awarded Hunter Development Preferred Development Plan for the Wharf, but deferred decision on the boulevard site pending further information on the proposal. That information now being provided. Hunter Development were advised of this back then, that, that the decision had been deferred pending further information. They went ahead in good faith and, and worked on providing that information. Eighteen months is not a long time, uh, when you're looking at a proposal like this. They perceived in good faith, have been given the extension to allow them to concentrate on other current developments. And there may be a perception that Hunter Development have cornered the market. But the fact is that only Hunter, that Hunter Development was the only interested party when we called for expressions of interest.
I support the motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, look, the point's been made before about the, uh, advice from the Proveny Advisor. Um, but, uh, but also that Hunter Developments was the only, um, you know, developer coming forward with, with an expression at the time. You know, we called for them for the, for the Wharf and boulevard site back in two thousand and sixteen. Um, but, but I, I do have a real, um, issue with the idea of, um, you know, opening the process up again in that it actually, I think, um, there's a risk that Hunter Developments might walk away. Nobody else comes forward and we end up with no development on that site. I think that's a real risk if we took that approach. Um, so I, I support the motion.
Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I want to reiterate what everyone said, but I would just perhaps, um, highlight Section D. Um, because as everyone in this chamber knows, once the development application is lodged, we have a statutory process that we have to follow. And there can't be any going outside of that statutory process. The interesting thing for, for me in, in this motion, and one of the reasons I will be supporting it, is that there's a community consultation before that application is lodged, built into this requirement. And I think that should give a lot of comfort to people about the transparency and openness of this particular process and how it will be dealt with.
Uh, other speakers? I just make one point, but, uh, the question's been begged. Uh, Hunter Development were certainly the only people to respond to the expression of interest process. But this council in deciding to, um, proceed with Hunter Development's application did so on the basis they complied with the requirements of the expression of interest process. So it's not as if we took one because they are the only one. We took them because they were a compliant, uh, proposal. were a compliant proposal. And I think that's important to be on the public record as well. Okay, Alderman Von Berto, write a reply. So the motion is that as amended by Alderman Von Berto and circulated, that there's a new Part A which deals with the extension of time. And the new Part D is a word, there's a slight amendment in there that's been written in. So all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Moving on to item 12. Alderman's question time, there are no matters on notice, questions without notice. Alderman Von Berto.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I would like to know when the recreation needs analysis is going to come to an ordinary workshop.
Through, Mr Mayor. Look, I don't have a set date at this moment. What I can say is I will try and expedite that as quickly as possible. It certainly needs to come to council, it's been underway for quite some period of time now. I will work through with the officers overseeing the recreation needs analysis during the course of the week and provide a written response to Alderman as to when I think we can expect to have a workshop by the end of the week. Not a workshop by the end of the week, I'll provide the advice by the end of the week.
Documentary question. Will that recreation needs analysis actually include the proposal as far as the instant shore croquet club moving?
Through, Mr Mayor. I've certainly asked it to be included in consideration. What it recommends, I don't know, but it's certainly been, we've requested it be considered as part of the overall recreation analysis.
Alderman Chalm.
Mr Mayor, considering the public works that are going on the Richmond Road at the moment, there are humongous drains that have been dug beside the road which are at least four feet deep and/or maybe deeper into the places. And they don't seem to be stating provisions to fill people who have driven along there before these drains have been dug, just stop them going into the ditch. And I just wondered, is this going to be a permanent thing as they have now or are they going to actually put some guardrails there? Because you can run off that road and, you know, might be an accident, it's just, the accident won't happen.
Through, Mr Mayor. The Department of State Growth Project will take up, try and seek an answer to that question with the Department of State Growth. It's not a council project, though.
Alderman Kusick.
The general manager's, or through the general manager, could have an update on Lord of our Boat ramp progress, please?
Graham, are you able to assist in that regard?
Through, Mr Mayor. Council's considering funding within the budget.
Suggestion some time ago, there's significant sporting development out on some vacant land next to what is now Lindislay North Primary School. Has anything been added? It seems to be dead.
Through, Mr Mayor. That was a state government proposal. My understanding is that they, it didn't proceed at the time, and that my understanding is that the state government department, used to be called Sport and Rec, I think it's part of the Premier and Cabinet now, are reassessing the, one, the capacity to deliver the project, and two, further considering alternative locations, given that I think the location there met some degree of angst from the school.
Alderman here.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is the third meeting in a row where I've raised this. Do we have an answer yet on the query about the traffic lights? Sorry, I'll just clarify, yeah, the synchronisation traffic lights.
Through, Mr Mayor. I apologise that that still hasn't been provided. I understood it had, it will be provided by Friday. Thank you.
I just want to foreshadow a question that I'll ask in the confidential section.
Alderman Chalm.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Sorry, this was in the quarterly report and I forgot to ask it there. I noticed the community bus in Clans Plains is noted as having broken down and can't be replaced, is repaired? Is that something that we need to, is that a council issue? Is that something we need to get involved in?
Mr Tooey.
Through you, Mr Mayor. We're working through a range of options. That bus is actually not owned by council, it has, I'm under control of the-
I have one, I'll notify council.
Can you provide an update in the weekly briefing for, thank you. Alderman Farnham.
Just in response to comments about the weekly briefing report, or was it the quarterly report, about trail bikes and the use of trail bikes. In my area, we still have a number of problems with trail bikes, particularly of an evening. And in the past, I've asked if these could be confiscated as due police policy as was one day some time ago. But this seems to have stopped happening and some of the feedback has been, we can't keep taking them off because the parents just buy more. However, these are not parents buying them, these are big boys on big bikes going really fast. So I would request that we once again as council discuss with the police how they are going to try and remediate this situation for the local community because it is totally obnoxious at times. The other thing is that within that review of second-
Question, yes, second question.
In the proposed update of the green space, I have asked again in past whether we could resurrect and redirect rocks to close off that pub, green space with rocks as we have done in other areas because they have a free run all the way from Rokeby to the top of Mocking Hand Drive. So that again is something we can do something about, and I'd like to see that in our allocation of funds for the year budget.
Other question. Mr Tooey on the first question.
Regarding to the bikes, I guess as part of that earlier, my response to an early question, yeah, we were trying to work with the Tasmanian Police about trying to get a response to that. It is correct that the Tasmanian Police under the Formal Management Protection Act do have powers to confiscate. Regarding the second question, part of that is to do with the green space that's in Clarendon Vale, that's currently being looked at as part of the development of the new pathway system from Mockridge Road through to Bradman, I think it is, and looking at some engine treatments for that. Likes to access that, but also still allowing access to people with pams and wheelchairs.
Yeah. Alderman Farley.
My request is in Opossum Bay, a rubbish receptacle to be placed at the end of the pier jetty road near the jetty there. Apparently there's nowhere to put rubbish and local residences are doing their own clean-up. And some of the material found is quite of a personal nature and it's quite distasteful. So if a bin could be put there, it would be very, it's a very heavily utilised.
Graham, is that your domain?
Yes, through, Mr Mayor. We have, or we may have one in that park, I'm not so sure. Certainly not with your high one. I know we've investigated it and then we've done it at the end of the jetty.
Difficult for our starting to remove.
Possible to put one in the area then.
Probably, I indicated, I made reference to the jetty, but this is not in the jetty. This is more in the parking, in the circular part. And you're probably confused, I made a request for a bin at Cremorne for the purposes of, and that was the response I got, that it couldn't be done because council couldn't service it. So this is a different, this is easily serviced, easily got out. Thank you.
Alderman Walker.
Yes, I'd like an update, Mr Mayor, if I could, through you to either Mr Tooey or Mr Graham in relation to the abandoned and/or stolen cars around the vicinity of Atkins Street from Rokeby, that sort of hill area. Has there been any liaison with the property owner around it and/or any progress at all?
Through, Mr Mayor. We've had discussions with the Australian authorities.
Prospects of surveillance, Mr Barron.
Through, it is a very big area, a wide area.
Before I ask two questions, is that blue light still operating all right? Hot colour, is it Alderman James? I can't see it behind him. Blue, I just want to make sure we've got that system working. My question is to-
That was the first one.
No, it wasn't. It wasn't. It was an observation.
Shout out like one.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, it wasn't. This is my question.
Please continue.
Thank you very much. The Blunston Arena fire evacuation alarm and recorded message combined to cause a nuisance for the local community. Is the council aware of any technical difficulties that Cricket Tasmania have in relation to this, a system? So my question may be answered by the general manager because he's about to jump to his feet, so perhaps I can get a-
Through, Mr Mayor. I'm looking at the other officers who may nod towards me, but I'm unaware of any recent occurrences. Certainly we had a problem dating back a couple of years ago when the new grandstand was first opened. I'm unaware of it, but I will take up the matter with Cricket Tasmania. Certainly the nods I'm, the shaking ahead I'm getting suggests that none of the other officers have received complaints or concerns being raised about it, but I will take it up with Cricket Tasmania.
Thank you very much. The second question, I had a call from a resident today to say that rabbits and wallabies basically in play proportions in Jillston Creek Bay Road. Now, the question I have, and this is what the gentleman asked me to ask tonight, because apparently he listens in and watches the recording on this-
Let's get the question on.
Okay. So the question is through you, Mr Mayor, to the appropriate officer, officers. Is there anything council can do in the way of advise or assist in this regard? Well, hear from the officers.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I think all we can do in this circumstance is raise the matter with the, not called the PIPW now, that Department of Primary Industry Parks Wildlife Environment and several other things. We can raise the matter with them and ask them what measures we, what measures can be implemented to try and control the problem.
All right, well that brings us to the end of the open session. Can I thank the members of the public for joining us so far this evening? We have several items on the agenda which are confidential and must be dealt with in closed session. So thank you very much.